She's on her way back. We'll go to make it back in time.
Well, that's right, the tree, all the trees.
Why don't we invite her to the trip?
I just had her just call you, sorry.
Well, it's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting door. Is there any additions to the agenda? Okay, hearing that, so we wish to move the agenda as presented by Lyle, thank you. Any questions on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Will you mind if I say come up now?
I have everyone.
Pardon?
I have everyone.
Okay. So what's carried?
That's not what yours says.
No, mine says zero, zero, zero. Okay, moving on to the regular minutes. January thirteenth, any questions, airs, missions?
I don't see anything.
Okay, thank you, George Lee. Okay, any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. She was coming up. Oh, there it comes. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Thank you, moving on to correspondence. Canadian Badon Tourism, they have a new member. Any questions on their news release?
Is that just to keep us informed, please join?
Yeah.
I believe so, which is kind of nice, you know, to see, you know, they're, they're quite proud of the, they've got a, I think they've got sixty-three, is it, or sixty-four now? Municipalities that have belonged to it, so it's nice to see.
It just says over sixty municipal members, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's sixty-three, I, I could be wrong, but I know it's, it's, it's a good number anyway, it's one of the largest corporations in Alberta. Okay, moving on to the Alberta Health Services. Days two cannabis legislation. Any questions on the? Not much we can do about it. Okay, and no questions now, we'll move on to the Alberta Order of Excellence nomination. So if you know of somebody and wish to nominate them, has to be in by February fifteenth.
Do you know if this goes to all the service groups and town?
I honestly don't know how far out they go. That's a good question, Lyle, I don't have a clue. Yeah, I don't know.
Are we suggesting that we distribute this to service groups to see if they have any interest?
In hand-delivered by me, so.
We could provide everybody with a, with coffee that they could take to all the committee meetings up here. So, fine.
That might be a good idea.
Just to, just to bring it up as a topic. We'll email you.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to the Ashland Arch. Regional Systems. And our December report, it's kind of neat, they've got that picture of Miles and Coldail's and Pitcher Creek's libraries. Some little things that they do different.
I like Coldail's kids' chair there.
Doesn't that look neat? Oh, I was in Miles, that, that little, that little corner there, I thought that was kind of neat too, so it's, it's pretty neat to see how every, every library does something a little different. Any question on that one at all? Uh, okay, so we wish to follow the correspondence. Okay, so, oh. Okay, any question on calls motion? Hearing none, call question. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business. Alberta Seniors Communities and Housing Association, where Lyle likes to go, if you want to meet in there, or wants to meet. Do you, who else is going, do you know?
Uh, I think Laurie is going from the county.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody else is. And hopefully, well. Yeah, we have our first Marcus Foundation with the new C A O tomorrow night, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if she's, I know they'd like the C A O to go, but.
Oh, that's good, yeah, it's always good to, to get up there and do a little networking and.
Well, I think we, we all know how fast everything moves from beginning to end. But we need to, if we're gonna try and get anything done in the next few years, we should be looking into.
Try and stay up.
You know, and see what the new ideas, because. You know, and maybe we're going about it the wrong way, maybe.
Yeah.
We, we need to find something totally new for the way up to other services.
So, Lyle just kind of made a request. Maybe we should move Lyle on that.
Motion.
Thank you. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the Orsk A C P grant application. Fairly self-explanatory, but.
Move that one?
Pardon? Sorry.
I would move that we authorize the town to participate.
Okay. Lyle moves that, that we. Apply for, send a resolution on that. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to five three, which is the town's. Fire. Pardon? Sorry.
Member at large.
Yeah, member at large. So, um, on this committee, there's three from the town, three from the county?
Yes. Two councillor each from the town and the county, and then two members at large from the town, two members at large from the county. Uh, the only thing in the agreement that restricts anybody from being a member at large was you have to be inactive from the fire department for three years. So you can't just quit the fire department and then.
So can, um, people that don't have, I mean, I don't know if they even want to, but if you haven't had a background of being a, on the trade department, would you consider them or not?
Do I have a background? No.
Well, I know, but you're one as a councillor, right? We can do a lot of things that we don't know anything about.
It would definitely be looked at as an asset for having that background.
Background, yeah, but it wouldn't be necessary.
The first two that were appointed, because obviously Dwayne was one of the first ones along, so they were both former fire chiefs, which gave them quite a bit of experience. So, um, if we advertise, then we'll send it off to the committee for, for recommendation.
Thank you.
If you have anybody.
Yeah.
No, I was just curious.
No, but if he happens, you know, if Richard happens to want it.
No, he, yeah. He doesn't know he doesn't. Just tell him he doesn't.
Okay.
Probably couldn't hear him.
Yeah.
So we, we have a vacancy, so.
Well, I recommend that we put an ad, post it, how we're doing it.
Be excellent, because we'll be out Wednesday.
Okay.
So I didn't worry in trouble, did I?
No, I didn't. Any comment on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously.
On and over that for council, we have already posted it on our website. I do know the committee members are talking to some members actually who may be interested, so.
Okay, moving on to committee reports, so there's the one after the golf course from January the ninth.
Just an observation on, on the golf course one. They've got a water levee, it was put in last year, which has got a long ways to covering the water bill. And to the point where, no, they didn't make any money or, or so, not much. But at least the seed is planted to put in the future, if they have money, to put it into reserves. For instance, golf carts. And you can allocate it that way. They're at least thinking about that now. So hopefully.
Then you're talking about the loan renewal. What's that for?
For the house on the driving range.
Oh, okay.
Out by the ponds?
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the planning commission. Okay, no questions on either of those. Somebody wish to follow the committee reports? Um, well, George Lee. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Next, carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to councillor reports. Mr.
And the planning commission is the only one I went to, and you got it right in front of you.
Okay. Any questions for me at all, or? Okay, moving on to councillor vote.
Um, the only one I had was F C S S. Uh, we did put a cell, a cellphone policy in place the other night. I guess, um, this girl was having a real problem with some people telling her always on their cell phone, so we thought it would be good to put a, a policy in. Uh, the early childhood development grant for nine thousand dollars was cut this year, so they will be getting it. Um, all the other programs, they all seem to be on full swing right now, and they all seem to be doing good, good numbers for everybody attending, everything that F C S has put in out there. Uh, February fourteenth, there is a dinner, it's How to Love Yourself. So it's, um, ten dollars a single, fifteen dollars a couple, if you want to go to that. And on March ninth and tenth, and April eighth to the fifteenth, they'll be having their tax clinic meeting for people to go and get their taxes done. And then I do have a request. On February the third, there is a countywide rec meeting that I would like to attend. If I get council's permission. I guess.
I have a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions on motion to allow George Lee to go to a countywide rec meeting? Where's that, George?
Uh, the lodge hall at two o'clock on February third.
You just have those occasionally?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah. And then like day con, the rec directors come from MacGowan and Milo and, um, I'm not sure, um, the base market, she does recs somewhere up there.
Does the Northwest.
Oh, okay, yeah, so like we all get together and we're at one meeting a year.
Okay, any question on Lyle's motion to send George Lee or let, allow George Lee to go to this meeting? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, George Lee, or?
No, don't say.
Any question for George Lee on anything that? Okay, moving on to councillor magazine.
I too attended the M P C meeting, uh, that's the only meeting I had, uh, I also signed up for the, uh, home and garden show, uh, for one shift. Looking forward to that.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Okay, thanks to Lyle, and obviously councillor Thomas is here tonight, councillor Roddy.
Um, on January eighteenth, um, community futures, we had a Saturday, um, meeting to go over, um, auditor reviews, recommendations. Um, as we had a couple of different applicants and just in our yearly operations plan, and then doing that comparison as well, and working on policies that came out of that. On the twentieth, I had a victim services unit, uh, per meeting, which most of it was around, um, going through the employment contracts, it's all time for renewal. And doing kind of same thing of comparisons, reviews, and then changes. And then also, I think, um, two policies, as per usual, we've been doing per meeting. Um, on the twenty-first, I had my regional response to elder abuse meeting. Um, unfortunately, didn't have quorum, but we did and went over future production, projections with Gabrielle, who's the, um, program coordinator that we share with Claire's home. And went quite in depth into the funding grant reports and reviews as to how for sustainability and being that economic climate right now politically is so. You know, trying to find absolutely any money that we can from any sorts or sources, um, possible, conventional and non-conventional. Um, and then on the twenty-third, had the regular community futures meeting, but because we also had to do, uh, budget review and, uh, W D sat in, put over our auditor recommendations. So it ended up being, um, like normally they would start at, um, their earnings would start at seven, and this one went, started at five. Um, and went till quite late, but hopefully we got enough hammered out. We do have already permit recommendations of a new auditing firm that we'll be going with, and we did get really good things and really good feedback from W D, who does the majority of the funding for community futures. And that's it.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Okay, that, and then Lyle.
Um, I have no meetings since last, um, town meeting. Uh, my meetings are all this week. Marcus Foundation, uh, health and wellness. That's it, so. Oh, yes, I did sign up for the trade show, I think that's all I can think of right now.
Okay, any question for Lyle?
Hearing none, not coming to me, I guess, um, I went to Edmonton and with the SEWA, we met with the Minister Jason Nixon, and, uh. There's kind of an example of how sometimes when you network a little bit, um, when we were going to meet with, uh, the minister. He was meeting with a group, and when, when the group came out, this Grant Hunter, which is the M L A from, I think Milk River, uh, was there, and I see him all the time down at Mayor's Reeves. Anyway, he's, he said, oh, you know, he's the Minister of Red Tape Reduction, come on down and visit with him after, so we met with Minister Nixon, and then, um, had a great meeting, um, well received. We, our ask was to get some support staff, uh, assistance to move the project forward. And, um, they have written us a letter and asked us who they'd like to come to the table, so sent back a letter of requests of people that we thought would be nice to meet with their, their executives assistants and, and, uh, support staff to see what direction to go for funding and, and to move the project forward. But he was very, very well rece, it was very well received. So anyway, went downstairs, met with Grant, and, um, again, he felt the project had tons of merits, and, um, gave us a couple places to go for some funding. There was one process that they, they, we talked about was, it's, it's called third-party review, that's where you send it up to somebody else, pay them a couple hundred thousand dollars to give you a five-page or a two-page document that says that what you did was right, or, you know, what direction you're going is correct. And, um, long story short, it, um, he, Grant didn't think we should go and spend that money, he thought we should go and find the full five hundred million dollars and build the plant. So he gave us a couple leads on a couple places that we might be able to find some money, and so, so it was very, very positive though, uh, of that, so then, um. Unfortunately, um, I traveled up with this Paul Ryan, who doesn't drive at night. When you go to Edmonton and have a meeting at three o'clock and don't get out until six thirty, it's pretty hard not to travel at night, so you spend the night in Edmonton. So.
In his car?
No, no, we stayed in a hotel, but, uh, but anyway, I just didn't anticipate spending, you know, two days, leaving walking at six in the morning, then coming back the next day in the afternoon, just so that we could be, but anyway, we did meet and, um. And I think there's another example too, you know, some of us, we talk about, um, you know, Skyping and doing stuff, you know, by the, you know, voicemails and, and different things like that. And it's really interesting, you know, I'm not much of a person that reads the, the room super well, but it's interesting to see sometimes how you, when you start to see some people's expression when they get the concept, or they are onside, and how excited they get. And so I think that there's advantages sometimes of almost being there face-to-face instead. Um, so then the next meeting I had was Pool Committee, um, to, for the, um, sign the documents and meet with the contractor, and they're just eager as can be to get going on it. Um, there's another meeting at the end of February, and, um, they're hoping to start sometime in the first part of March, so that's the first part of March, you'll start to see some stuff start, starting to show up. I, I assume, you know, we will probably see them fencing it all off, some, um, shacks coming on site, uh, and then they'll probably start doing the, taking the asbestos in the, in the lead out of the building. So you'll probably see that first of the asthma people removing the, the stuff that they have to. But they're really eager to go. Uh, Ward Brothers, um, you know, good-sized company out of Lefbridge, um, they're the ones that were partners and built the A T B center. If you've ever been in the new south, I guess it's called southwest corner of Lefbridge, there's a great big huge, huge complex there. Well, Ward Brothers were the ones that built it, so they've got quite a bit of experience, and they're really excited about getting going. Um, I guess the, the pool company that they, which is Western Rec, have already ordered stuff, they're already ready to go, so. They don't believe there'll be any issues of, of meeting their timelines unless something major comes along for them. It was really quite exciting to see them. The other question that they had too is that if you know of anybody that's looking for work, um, they are trying to potentially hire some local people, probably more on the labor side, and somebody to, you know, be there, their E P as a, as a cleanup and make sure the place is neat and tidy and, and secure. I assume that's the direction that partly it, but, um, they will supply their list of contractors soon, and, you know, and again, right at the moment, they're, they're kind of saying, if there's anybody out there, let them know once that's, uh, going, and we'll go from there. Uh, then I had a SEWA executive meeting in hyper, uh, Wilk, or Wieland County on Friday, and again, we just went over all the stuff that's, is going on, all the meetings that are coming up. This week, again, like Lyle said, this is my busiest week, but on, um, Thursday, I have a meeting with the U C P, so it's, um, Rural Caucus, uh, again, to, to do with SEWA. And, uh, so it'll be sixteen, I think it is, M L As there, and hopefully we can give the pitch for why we need one of these in Southern Alberta. And then on the Friday, we have the SEWA meeting, and originally we had hoped that the site would have been recommended, but it's not. They, they did meet, uh, with the engineers on the, uh, seventeen, I think, uh, no, it shouldn't have been, anyway, they met on the Monday, uh, the sixth. No, I lied. The, what day is that? Must have been the twentieth, no, no, it was, it was earlier than that. And, um, so somewhere around the sixth or seventh, they met with, uh, all the municipalities and that are proposing the site to, uh, come up with the information that some of them were missing. And so they'll have their recommendation done before the fifteenth of February, so it'll come to the SEWA meeting in February, whenever it's picked, it's probably the twenty-eighth. And I'm not sure where it'll be, but at that meeting, it'll be where they'll come up with the recommendations of where the site will be. Then sometime in March, probably, we will have a, hopefully, hopefully a special meeting with SEWA, uh, to, you know, down the site, and then after that, we'll go from there, so. Um, other than that, I think this is pretty well it, I'm not sure if I had mentioned last time that we did have, uh, one group that had, um, opted out of SEWA or interested in coming back. We've heard that there might be another one too, that since we're getting a little closer to the goal line, that they might be interested in coming back, so.
So there's room for them to come in?
Yeah, there's, we have a policy of how they can get back in, and that was one question, I guess, that we asked, and is, you know, what is the advantage of being a member? And, um, so I think in the next couple months, we'll try and come up with a reasons for what's the advantage of being a member, you know, like. One advantage right now is that you're in on the opportunity to do some policy, you know, setting and, and, um, the directions on which direction it should go. Other advantages might be as a partner, you get to, you know, get in a, a lower price, and you're, you're, you're a member, not a customer, you know, things like that, what's the advantage of being in? Membership's cheap, it's only fifty-three cents a, a person per capita. So I always say that it's cheaper than buying crayons, but, um, but anyway, every municipality has to decide whether it's economical for them to go on or not, so. So anyway, that's, it's coming up, so hopefully we're getting closer. Um, we also are creating a list of where we've been, what we've done, and what's left to do, you know, so, uh, and we're gonna try and, you know, put a bit of a chart and when we anticipate doing those deadlines, so that we have a goal to achieve those deadlines, and. So if somebody looks at the chart, they can say, wow, we've been doing this long, this is what we've achieved, these are the ones that were left, and again. So anyway, that's, that's it for me, unless somebody's got some questions.
How, have you been with SEWA since day one?
Um, other than my three years of, um, of retirement, um, forest retirement, um, yeah.
Retirement?
Been, been, there since day one, yeah. There, there's a few municipalities that have been there, like, um, like Kim Craig from Coldail, he was there from day one, um, this Paul Taylor, he wasn't there at the very first meeting, but the second meeting.
Paul Brian.
Or Paul, I'm sorry, Paul Brian, sorry, sorry, Paul Taylor. Yeah, Paul Brian, um, he's been there virtually from day one, but, um, some of the other ones, like, you know, there's probably one, majority that are still there today, the majority of them were there from day one. And, and the, the concept of it, shouldn't say the concept, but the proposal for to have one in Southern Alberta was really reared from Gary Ellis. He was the one that said, you know, um, we don't want to have a landfill in our county, um, how could we find another method that's economical and, and does something better for the environment and bear it?
So basically, a lot of people have been out there since day one, so there's a lot of passion, everyone's passionate about it.
I, I think so, I mean, I mean, the, even the philosophy, and it's, it's come right out, I mean, I'm not sure, um, like Wieland County Ben, um, he has said that, you know, no matter where it's at, you know, he will still push for it. Now, whether his, rest of his county will, if he, they're not successful. Same with, um, you know, Ray Jessica, he's from, from Newell, he, he says the same way, he believes that it's something that, no matter where it's at, it's an asset to our municipalities, and it's an asset to us, and it's the best thing for our environment. And then again, too, you know, um, so the county has made that same comment, so any of the three that have put in their name are on the shortest, all three of them said that they will, uh, would participate no matter what. But the one comment that ha, we have is that, um, is that one of these days are gonna come to all of us and, and say, will you sign a memorandum of agreement to, to send your garbage to this facility if it is built? If, as long as it's up to a certain price, like they're gonna come with a high end and say, you know, so that everybody, we know exactly how many tons of garbage. Right at the moment, we believe we. Right at the moment, we believe we control, if all of them said yes, we'd control 160,000 tons. And it would burn 300,000 tons, so there's room for 140,000 tons. But all it takes is, you know, Leffbridge to join back in and this is all, you know, testing, so. So it looks, it looks, unfortunately, it's just a really, really slow process. And unfortunately, it's created because all of our studies have been done by grants, you know, like grant funding. And all of them have taken at least a year to do, you know, to do the study, do the process. It's, it's slow going. And the only thing that's kind of nice about it is that when you go to see somebody like this Jason Nixon, who is the energy minister or the environment minister. And he says, this is the best proposal he has ever seen, you know, so it makes you feel good that you've done something right. You know, I mean, it's been a slow process and, but Kim.
Yeah, but I think you're engineers, working by the hour, not by the job.
Well, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, to a degree, that's, they aren't, because we, it's like the swimming pool project, you kind of give them a certain amount of money. Certain amount of money. And unfortunately, I think that every time you turn around, that the goal line changes, the parameters change. So I think that's like with any, I pick on engineers a lot, but yet I sometimes feel sorry for them, because I think sometimes they don't anticipate what the things that potentially change.
Will the rules change?
Yeah.
And that's the hard part, if they stayed the same all the time, you'd be up to that level and you're okay. But just when you get really close, they move that up there, so.
Yeah, so anyway, it's, it's coming, but it has been a slow process, so. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to file the council reports? Mr. Taylor? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the action reports, action list from administration.
We completed everything from the last meeting. The only things outstanding are the things that are long term. So unless there's any questions from council on anything that's outstanding.
Okay, moving on, I guess, and please.
My administration report, since my, really the pool contract was a fairly exciting meeting in there. As Tom described, that was, they were very excited about getting going. Cut contact with noting the library contacted us about the janitorial, they made an extension to that contract, so I helped them to put that together. So now it's standardized with the same one that we use for ours, so. Got that finished up. And then on the staff side, as you are aware from the email, and we had two staff members put in resignations for this. And it's on the agenda for in camera to discuss that, so. Formal meetings, North and Company with Hewitt, just to, they're getting closer on their end to finalizing that. And I, we have a meeting tomorrow, possibly, if everything comes through, to meet with them for preliminary design stuff that they've been throwing together. So we'll see how that goes. And again, Tangle, we met with SEMA Plus for the street program, just to look at the final review. Now, we have to get the drawings done up so that we can put it to tender. We're hoping to do that for the spring again, like we talked about at the last council meeting. They're wanting to wait a little bit longer this year for that tender. Because get better pricing is what they're hoping, so you probably won't see it until the end of February. And, yeah.
Kim, this is SEMA.
Yes.
They just do roads, right? They just do simple roads?
No, they, no, they do all, all sorts of, they're, they're a general, large engineering firm, so we've. The, from municipal standard, we mostly use them for our civil stuff, which yes, is exactly that, roads and that. But they do, the bigger they get, the more expertise they have. So we could have contracted them if, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna build new, they did our liquids for us.
So we use it quite a bit, do we?
Yeah, they've gone through a couple of different name changes. They started as Brisbane Sentis, then changed to BSEI. Our relationship with the company itself has been about 25 years, yeah.
Okay, cool. I was just curious.
They have an extensive history of the town. Of course, a lot of the beginning people that were with us have all since retired, but, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Kim? If not, somebody wish to file the administration reports?
Also.
Lyle? No questions on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, then I'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, now we need to go in camera for the other items. Mr. Taylor moves us in for in camera for the resignation of the meeting peace officer and. Okay, any questions on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. I think it was because Paul got on with that one, we can still do that. Hey, thank you. Okay, so it's moved, moved into camera.
Has anybody had their list up?
Okay, so the mic's on, we're back recording, George Lee moved us out of the camera at 8:38. Any question on moving out of camera? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay. So the discussion that we have had is thanking our bylaw officer Greg Arlett for accepting his letter of resignation. And also the letter of resignation from, from.
That wasn't part of that.
I don't know what the, from Farida, from the.
Tourism?
Tourism and thanking them for their employment and being members of our team and, and that was great. But because of our discussion with the peace officer one, we have a motion that's being recommended by the administration, so.
So the motion reads that council direct administration bring back a presentation for options in regards to the peace officer program.
Okay, so under the peace, go ahead.
We just wanted to make that motion.
So Lyle moves that. So under that peace officer program, it'll come back to us at a meeting, future meeting and discuss the pros and cons of what's ahead of us for the, what's coming down the pipes from the provincial government for funding for, for what we're going to have to pay towards the policing program. And to the ICMP and also pros and cons to all of this, the bylaw, peace officer, contracting, all of that things, so. Okay, so Lyle's got a motion on the table, any questions or comments? Hearing none, call a question. And that is carried unanimously. Any other to do with the camera item? Hearing none, we'll move on to the last motion. Michelle, thank you, motion to adjourn.
Surprise.
Like I said, if it wasn't for Michelle, we would not know.
He's been here all night.
Okay, any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's not what I was supposed to ask, I'll call a motion.
It's twice this year.
I'm not doing very good, you guys are going to have to replace me. Okay, thank you very much, we, we officially adjourned.
So now I had it come back three times, the last two times. That's saying who voted?
Oh, didn't, why don't, didn't bounce back, but.
It's coming back, it was coming back twice and now.
Mine was back twice all the time.
Oh, does it? Really? Tonight was the first time it was back. Then it was just this last two that came back three times.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody. Lyle, did you figure?